Okay, it looks like it's six o'clock. So I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 13th, City Commission Work Session to order. Can we call the roll?
Mayor Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Here.
Commissioner McCullough.
Here.
Commissioner Opel.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one major item on the work session tonight, and that's the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan update.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ben Schmeele. I'm a planner in the Community Development Department here at the city. Tonight is an update on the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan. This is the last held a work session during the fall of last year. My team and I and CD have done a lot of groundwork since then. We've done a lot of public engagement and drafting of the documents that were included in your packet. So we're going to go over that a little bit tonight. This won't be, you know, going through a lot of the content because you already have all that in front of you. But I think it would be helpful to kind of go through the document structure more so and then take questions afterwards. But we're looking for your input on these documents as they have been presented to you in your packets. So this is the timeline for the project. We are nearing toward the end. The drafts that you had in your packet, that represents the first full draft of these planning documents. With your input tonight, input from the Planning Board last week, we will hit the road again with a final round of public engagement and finalize these documents kind of live as we go through that process. And we're shooting for adoption by end of the, beginning of the second quarter of this year is the idea. So a little background on the structure of this document. If you were, if you've been following along since we started this process, we kicked it off with an initial background report, just taking all the data information. There was a public survey, a business owner survey that went out. We did a lot of mapping exercises, data collection and analysis that went into this background report. A draft that was published this past fall around beginning of October. This document, this draft document directly responds to some of the information gathered in that report. It is split into three parts. We have the development principles and goals, policy principles and goals, and then an implementation plan. So going through the document structure, introduction kind of sets the stage, establishes the plan area, talks about the process to date with the plan. It establishes the general vision statement by which we will build all of our goals and principles off of. The first part of the document, the Development Goals and Principles section, that really establishes the vision, the principles and goals for the physical development of downtown. It takes the study area, turns it into a plan area, and breaks it up into multiple sub areas. There's 10 of them, which really just helps us to be able to look at these different areas, what makes them unique. And it helps us to kind of create a better unified vision for those sub areas that generally contribute to the whole of downtown. And it really helped, we split these sub areas into two categories, sub areas of change and improvement, hash marked here, and then areas of stability and maintenance, just the solid areas. So looking at this map, you can kind of get an idea of kind of where the focus of our efforts were in engaging the community for a future vision of downtown. Areas that are not for change and improvement, largely areas that are or recently redeveloped or are in the historic core, have a lot of good things going for them, not a lot of physical change envisioned by the community there. But more so on sort of the areas skirting the historic core, a lot of conversations about the mall, Third Street, west of the conference center.
Ben?
Yes.
Is it okay if we ask questions?
Sure.
What was that area, I think it was Makers?
Yes.
Number D. What, can you orient me? What does that mean and who's there?
Yeah, the southern end of downtown was looked at in a kind of a parallel study. The Flint Hills region received a grant from the EPA to study brownfields in the area. Working with city staff, we looked at that area specifically. So there's a bit more detail on that in Appendix B. But that area was covered in that study. It's really just kind of the industrial extension of downtown. Thank you. Been talking a lot today. Kind of an industrial extension of downtown along Fort Riley Boulevard. Not a lot of, you know, development change envisioned there. But the idea was more that it would kind of stay in the sort of light industrial function that it does today. Obviously, open to improvements. Some ideas thrown out there were maybe some M A T C case study collaboration space for, you know, creating, you know, more craft scale products or testing, that kind of thing. Does that make sense? So in our public engagement, we did some pretty cool exercises with the community in our Steering and Technical Committee, utilizing some Lego models. Really helped do some hands-on kind of work with that to really visualize what physical change downtown could look like in the future. So what we did was we translated those models into the virtual model that you see here, really emphasizing the kind of bulk massing location of development in the future. So this is an overview of the whole of downtown. And to the right, you see a sub area example. So these are directly correlating. So with the input from our Steering Committee, Technical Committee, talking with several developers, business owners and focus groups, these models were developed to kind of show what growth could look like in the future at different levels. So this is our low-growth model. This is what would, kind of looks at the low-hanging development opportunities throughout downtown. Think vacant lots, underutilized parking areas, not a lot of consolidation or coordination required, certainly not really looking at community or city-owned property for any redevelopment or reuse opportunities. This is a medium growth. This is where we start to see some consolidation, some city-owned property maybe starts to be considered for redevelopment or reuse. We start to see some parking structures come in in this growth scenario. And maybe vacant lots are redeveloped with a little bit more intensity. And then we have the high-growth scenario where those kind of ordinary boundaries or ordinary barriers that we see to redevelopment are kind of removed. So, you know, we're seeing a lot of assessment, looking at city-owned property for potential redevelopment or parking garages. You know, whole or half blocks are maybe consolidated and redeveloped. Certainly any underutilized parking areas. And this is not something that is viable. Like this, this model as a whole, I'll say, is not realistic. This would be a lot of growth in downtown. But it's helpful to see it stitched together, to see how the sub areas kind of interact. You know, maybe a high-growth scenario is completely realistic in a specific sub area. And, you know, that might accommodate all of the growth that downtown can absorb over the next 20, 25 years. So it's just helpful to kind of see it all stitched together and what that could look like. So what we do is we take these models and we are going to run a calculation to kind of get an idea of what kind of space capacity could be created taking this model and translating into that. This is just to kind of give an idea of what is the community's appetite for change and how does that translate into actual square footages or parking spaces or increase the number of residential uses. And we've broken that down by sub area as well. So there's a master table in this section of the plan that will basically be the sum of all those sub area calculations. So the, aside from the model, there's some language in the section that looks at things that maybe can't be reflected in that physical development model but are described more so to get an idea for the quality and the type of development that a specific sub area may want to see. And that's broken down into these three aspects of uses form and streetscape. And we've also peppered in what we're calling conceptual projects throughout the document. These are projects that, you know, full disclosure are not, you know, don't obligate anybody to do anything. It's merely an exercise to take maybe a vacant lot or a parking lot and kind of, you know, allow us to imagine what it could be. That might just be to, maybe it's, maybe it's a development that's kind of in the theme of the sub area or meets those goals that are described in that sub area. In some cases, it's, you know, maybe we're working with a private property owner to, you know, kind of dream these things up. But kind of get us, you know, thinking and visualizing what development in a sub area could look like that's reflective of the vision for that sub area. Part two, policy goals and principles. This looks at kind of the softer things, things that we can't really reflect in a development model, but are certainly topics that are important to downtown. These are, this section covers all of the topics that were covered in the background report, from planning context to land use, demographics, housing, parking, all of that stuff. So it's directly creating visions and goals based on the assessment in the background report. The way that it's set up is it takes the overall vision statement here and develops subdivisions in each of those planning topics. And then under those subdivisions creates goals and principles that can either be more proactive steps to be taken under those goals or provide more reactive guidance under those principles. Goals and principles are kind of on a spectrum. So, you know, we didn't discriminate between the two. But yeah, they're, they're both under the same thing. So this is just an example of what that could look like, say, in the housing section. So we have our general vision at the beginning of the document. Vision 5.1 describes a vision for housing downtown. And then underneath that are two goals and principles that would help us to achieve that subdivision and then thereby achieve the overall vision. Final part, part three, is where we have the implementation plan. So this looks at all of those goals, principles, and kind of consolidates them and creates actionable items out of them. We have a description of the action. We will be listing out all the applicable goals and principles once they've been finalized and vetted. We have a trigger. Should we do it now? Do we need to do it sometime in the future? Maybe after another action has been taken? We have a description of what that action would entail. We've assigned a priority, a lead agency, and then identified any supporting agencies. There's also two appendices. I won't go into much detail with that. They were included in your packet, but it's the original background report and then the, the draft of the South Downtown Brownfield Study that I mentioned earlier. This is our tentative timeline moving forward. Big emphasis on tentative, but this gives you kind of an idea of where we're going next. So we have our technical and steering committee meetings toward the end of this month. We will have a couple, we'll have at least one more work session with the Historic Resources Board. We'll continue drafting the imagery and the conceptual projects that have placeholders in the document right now. And then we will reengage the public with that imagery and with the full draft, going back to all those groups that we met with last summer during our initial phase of public engagement. And then, once everything has been finalized and drafted into a final draft, then we would start the adoption process. So that's the idea. Any questions?
Yes, can you go back?
This slide?
Yep. March 29th, the model fly-through is due. I don't understand that term, fly-through.
Yeah, sure. So that model, that development model that I showed earlier, this is, lives in a computer program that we can, you know, literally fly around in. So the idea would be to create some promotional materials that would include a narration and a kind of a fly-through of the model. We would include that imagery from conceptual projects and kind of the vision imagery in the policy document. And that would kind of, that would live outside of an adopted plan, but it really would probably be the point of, you know, most common interaction with the plan. Not a lot of people want to read a 400-page document. So if we can have a five-minute video that explains it, that would be ideal.
Commissioners, I do just want to say Ben created a really cool fly-through back when we did the Aggieville Community Vision Planning. And that really kind of helped tell the story, helps us share that on social media. And people kind of, like Ben said, get an understanding. So I'm anxious to see this fly-through myself.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll comment. Couple things. Does our contract with the mall allow us to do things on that property or would that have to be renegotiated?
I might let the City Manager's Office talk to that.
I'll speak to it. So with the, there's nothing in our agreement per se. It's a lease. But the new owners.
Ron, walk me through what, what the lease is. I mean, I can't.
So the lease just stipulates the ground lease as well as the building outline and the outlots. And then the parking's a separate component of that. And the terms of the lease are essentially, they're going to do that. They have to maintain the area. We have some, if there's some significant damage, we can potentially help with that, but on like the parking lot sort of thing. So the new owners did express comments that they were certainly interested in looking at what the mall is going to be in 10 to 20 years and weren't opposed to all kinds of ideas, including public spaces. And related to fitness, they shared a facility where they have indoor aquatics facility in one of their malls. So those are, those are components. I think whether it's a mixed-use density, you see a lot of.
So there would be no real issue then, I mean, no major issues to adding structures to the parking lot area? Do we, we have to have their permission?
Yeah, they would have to initiate it.
Yeah. They would have to initiate it?
They would. They're the, well, they have control of the property for 90 years.
Okay. But if a developer were to come to us, we would send them?
To them.
To them?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I keep sort of harping on this, but I think it's really important that we consider growth as it may be in 2035, not as it is in 2024. And what I'm seeing, and my son works in Silicon Valley, and I asked him about San Francisco because we hear so much about homeless people in San Francisco. And he said, the real issue is not homeless people, but the fact that everybody's working distantly. And so all of those giant high-rises and skyscrapers are not full of people who need lunch and who want to shop in the small boutiques. Downtown is rather empty. And there was a thing today on NPR about that, the fact that people aren't coming into work. So it would seem to me, if we're looking at usage in 2035 or something like that, we need to take into consideration that if we want the downtown to stay vibrant, we've got to put people there. And people may be, you know, the working people may be working on their computer. I mean, I can think of many businesses downtown where the employees do not have to be in that.
Sure.
Location. So it would seem to me that we should really emphasize housing because if people live there, then they're going to shop and they're going to eat out and they're going to do those kinds of things. And so, you know, I just really, you know, and I didn't see much about bikeways and that kind of thing in the. I want us not to build what we think the world should be, but I want us to kind of step outside ourselves and ask the professionals who kind of can tell us these things what, what it may look like. It really appears to me that we need to seriously put more housing in every kind of cranny we can down there in order to create the users for all these shoppies and that kind of thing. Because if I'm in a law office, you know, even if my office is there, if I'm not there, if I'm home, because I can do that, or if I'm in an accounting firm, there's no reason for me to go in. And I think the county, am I right on this? Is going to a four-day work week. They talked about that.
No, they discussed it.
Okay, well. Yeah, this, this kind of thing, you know, the city might look at this too because it's more efficient and people don't have, you know, they get parties off. And so what I'm saying is I'm really concerned that we plan for a new kind of lifestyle, perhaps, that we found during COVID we could do and many people really embraced. And also, just looking at ability to access places. And I liked the fact that in some of yours, you talked about senior housing. I think it's super, I'd love to live downtown when I could, you know, when I could walk to a restaurant or I could. I know people who've lived in the Wareham and love living in the Wareham, except for the parking issue. The parking issue always comes up. So please, when you're looking at this, try and sort of project needs into the future. The other thing I think we need to be very firm on the zoning, but be flexible. Create a way to tell people this is what's going to go here and stick with it, not be swayed by somebody who comes in and wants to put in a, you know, that doesn't really fit into our plan. But on the other hand, make it possible for people who come in and do, you know, to, to sort of, I don't want to say zoom through zoning, but, but to be able to really be flexible and have the, have very clear. I think if you have rules and you know what you're going to face, then if you come in with a development, you don't sort of, you're not sort of all over the board. You will really sort of zero in on what we want you to do and what you can do to make that work.
Sure. Do you mind if I address the housing topic? Second to the, the topic of the mall, housing was the most talked about issue downtown. Obviously, you know, citywide, nationally, it's a big issue right now. We, we heard almost in every focus group that we met with, every stakeholder group, that there was a huge need for housing in our downtown. If we just look at what has been developed there in the last 20 years, it's impressive what, what can be done in a relatively short amount of time. And so housing is very thoroughly addressed in this plan in conjunction with our housing market analysis that was completed in, at the end of 2022. So we're looking at that analysis that shows us we need, gosh, what is it, 30, 2,200 to 3,600 units in Manhattan over the next 20 years? We can look at this plan and decide how much of that do we want to be in our downtown?
I just think that it's really important to look at the plan and say how much do we want and say, if we're going to have the shops and the restaurants, and I know Sparks just left from downtown, and, and that's kind of because it's, it was a hamburger restaurant type, you know? And perhaps we didn't have enough sort of people living in that area to support that, you know, type of restaurant. That's more kind of what most Americans think of driving up in their car and ordering it instead of sitting down, which I find very nice. So the other thing is, the Regional Planning Organization helped us with that brownfield study, right?
Yes.
Do you know how much we brought in to do that?
How much we brought?
What, what the grant was from the feds to?
The original EPA grant was, I want to say like $700,000.
I'm sorry, what?
About $700,000 to the Flint Hills Regional Council. And then they dispersed the funds from there.
Yeah, so that was, that was quite a bounty from the Regional Planning Organization, I would say.
Yeah, our, our study on the south end, you know, wasn't that full amount, for sure.
And, and I think that area really can be something that we, something very special because we, we don't have, I mean, we kind of have a blank palette there if we really go in and develop that area. And we could do some really interesting housing. We could do some things that permit you to see the river over the levee. And I just, I think, you know, all, all I'm saying is, what we've got has served us quite well. But please figure out what people want to have them service, you know, in 20 years. Come on. Oh, gosh, you guys.
I'm just going to, are those hard copies for us? Because I've been scrolling through several hundred pages.
These are hard copies for me. I've got my markups in here, but I can, yeah, we can get you.
Thank you. I've just, you know, I'm constantly resizing the font on the computer.
I understand, yeah.
Can I have copies of the appendices also? Okay, thanks.
I'll chime in because I've been working on that group and I think the plan's pretty good. And I think on that housing, Karen, I mean, we talked about that when through. We talked about a lot of housing down there. And I know one of our comments was the congestion we were going to create and how would we work the parking? I know we were looking at trying to keep it walkable and get to everything, but that was really our big concern is could we have all those people down there? And while we may say we don't want them to have cars, pretty much everyone wants to have at least one car to, to, to put in. And that was one of the big concerns we just came up with because we saw, look at all these people, how are they going to get from one place to another? But I think we had some pretty good high density that we talked about for the plan.
Yeah.
And I was hoping on that, I'm with you on that, John, the, the parking and the transportation. And I've always advocated that we come up with some kind of a, maybe partner with ATA or some other company and come up with a shuttle that would, that would just be inside a small area, maybe between Aggieville and downtown. And, and that would cause people not to have to, you know, drive cars around. In fact, you know, like you say, if you work from home, you might not even need a car if you could work remote.
Right, but if you're living there.
Yeah, that's true. If you're, if you're living there, that's what I mean. So I'd like to see, you know, that develop, but that's a, that's a tricky one to get a company to do it. And, you know, what would be the hours and things like that, so.
Yeah, we, we talked about it a little bit in the Transportation Chapter. Ideas thrown out by the public, you know, went as far as the, you know, re-establishing the old trolley that went down points and connected to Aggieville. You know, maybe not feasible today, but, you know, the idea of having increased options so that maybe you can park a little bit further out, take advantage of some underutilized areas and, you know, shuttle in, especially on, you know, busy weekends.
Yeah, so we talked about that at ATA, that trolley idea, but, but not, of course, not with tracks.
Right.
Electric ones and they'll be on wheels. And what's interesting is there's companies that manufacture these things and they would actually look sort of like the. and they would actually look sort of like the old trolley.
Yep.
So it, so it, so it wouldn't even be like an ATA bus. It'd be pretty clear, this is a, you know, inner-city, you know, trolley service. And, and that'd be something I'd love to see happen, but, you know, you can't do that overnight. But it, but it would be a great deal.
Absolutely.
And we, we probably want to make a motion that we allow some public comment. We've got at least two folks here that may want to speak. So is the commission open to having public comment at the work session?
Do you want to come?
I was just going to say, I really appreciate that you all had kind of looked at some of the underutilized parking areas. I know Manhattan doesn't, or at least downtown Manhattan doesn't have parking requirements, which is great because that's something that I would like to not have if we did. Just because, I mean, all of those parking lots are fairly empty most of the time. So I really like the idea of the, the farmer's market structure there. I think that would be a really, really cool asset to the community. And yeah, just like trying to be as efficient as we can with the space.
Okay, so I've made a motion, we have to do a procedural vote to allow speakers during there, so can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, can we call the rule?
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Mayor Butler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak? Gina, you're not going to say anything tonight?
I can, if you want me to.
Oh, yes, we, we would expect that.
I mean, I, I feel like I've been so involved with this that, I mean, I'm talking about it so often. Karen, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. The bikes and trails is so important. Connecting the linear trail to downtown has been a 15-year-long goal or initiative that the DMI Board of Directors has had, just sort of floats there. It's the only one that hasn't been achieved. Housing, as we all know, that's, it's so important. Right now, what we consider, what we count in housing is not single-family in the neighborhoods, but over the top of commercial buildings and the apartment communities, it's 315 apartment units and they're 99% commercially occupied. They really turn over before you realize that they're, excuse me, even vacant. That is really similar to our commercial vacancies right now. They're, they're turning over so quickly. We have the Sparks Burger building, which everyone knows about. And then usually, you don't even know. It, it goes off of a lease or it goes out of business or they move away or they close or whatever the reason, and somebody else leases it. We have probably one office building that is not at 100%, but otherwise, right now, we're at our all-time highest occupancy for commercial and business services, which would be an attorney, insurance, engineers, that kind of thing. So, and we're right in the middle of our annual, every year I, I conduct a survey to both the public and to the stake, downtown stakeholders. And we're right in the middle of collecting that. It'll run for another month or so. Besides, in the inflationary period that we're in, this has been a really great five years for us. I'll mention one other thing. I, well, let me say two other things. I, I love that you said to think about lifestyle trends as they, as we look into the future. And it's, it's really hard to predict those things. But I have visited five downtown sister communities, sister downtowns in this since January. And what I have noticed is severely lacking in those very prominent downtown communities that we all know, is this inability or unwillingness to sort of address the loneliness issue, the, the connections that are missing, the belonging. And overwhelmingly, in our downtown, whether you're a visitor or you work there or you live there, or you're just a patron or citizen in Manhattan, most people will tell you that they do feel a sense of gathering, a space to gather, a place to belong in our downtown. And other communities, and I'm talking about Overland Park, and I'm like, where we, we're starting to be compared to now, have looked at us and said, how do you get all these people to come down here and rally around what you're doing and participate in your events? And it's, it's been great because simultaneously, for 15 years, we've been growing at such a rapid pace that we have not really been able to say to ourselves, who are we? We, we sort of have this identity crisis because we've just been growing so fast and it's been all hands on deck and, and just trying to fill the gaps and keep up with the pace and give the patrons and the citizens and the visitors and everybody what they want, and also give the stakeholders what they want. So right now, we're going through a, a new, a branding process. And it's been interesting and fun, along with visiting these sister communities and being a part of the downtown tomorrow's planning process and the Riley County planning process has really opened my eyes to what we are. And we don't necessarily need a huge amount of development. We really don't. We need things that connect what we already have and create spaces for people to gather and be together, whether those are indoor or outdoors. It doesn't need to be overbuilt, for sure. I think that's my current takeaway anyways. And yes, district loop, connecting downtown to Aggieville. Any questions?
Gina, could I just say, I think there's something to be said for not being able to park right in front of where you're going, because I was going to a thing at Flight Crew the other day and I walked past two businesses I didn't, the consignment place I didn't even know was there. I mean, so really, it's kind of good to have to, you know, pass some of these places that you don't even know exist, and there they are, so.
Yes. And interestingly, in the last downtown plan, we, our city fathers and the people that think about these things and city mothers, built downtown or projected downtown to be a walking district and invested all of that money in infrastructure and to, to be a walkable district. And we have a great walking score. And I sort of feel passionate about protecting what we've already invested in and what we've already done and, and not move too far away from that, but, but build upon what we already have. And that is certainly walking. When you think about it, you're in a stadium and you will walk through that parking lot and Walmart and a mall and where, you know, but people do tend to get a little bit out of shape when they can't park right in front of, but, so it is. You'll be interested to know that in that survey, one of the questions I've asked every year for 12 years is, do you want to see Points Avenue become a pedestrian mall where there's no vehicular traffic? And it's just one of those questions, you know, that people talk about and it kind of gets, it's kind of a hot-button thing. But over the years, it has gone from absolutely never, don't you ever do it, to, you know, we're right here, 55, 60%, oh, maybe just Thursday through Sunday, we would, we would like to have that. So there is this turn of, and again, that points back to gathering. That points back to creating that area that's, you know, kind of closed off where you can get together and you can do an event and you can socialize and have live music and all the things, Thursday through Sunday. So I think we, we can build upon what we, that's not to say, I mean, I love everything that we're doing. I just, I don't think that even in 20 years that we have to overly do it because we have such an awesome foundation already. But that's just me.
Thanks, Gina. Anyone else wish to make public comment on the plan? Seeing none, then we'll, we'll close public comments. Any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, I have another question that I thought of. With this plan and redevelopment and stuff, is there anything in place to consider the aesthetic of any type of development or anything that may happen around that?
Certainly. So in the policy, goals and principles section, I believe it's chapter nine, Building Design, Streetscape and Environment, kind of, it establishes some of those guiding principles, speaking to things like walkability, design material, building material, interacting with the, the public realm, buildings built up the sidewalk, parking behind the building, some of those things.
But is there like, any type of review board that, like, I don't know, I guess, do we have something like that?
We don't have.
Like an act council?
No.
Yeah. That may be something that's worth considering, I think, if, you know, we just want to make sure everything looks like it fits, right? And, yeah.
The historic core of the downtown, there, there is a formal historic district. So any building permits that's pulled within those boundaries are reviewed by the Historic Resources Board for compatibility. That's kind of a, you know, it, it's a judgment call on, on their part. There's no hard and fast standards. But what this, what this process allows us to do is to look at the potential of maybe creating those standards and ensconcing them into our development code. If it's, you know, there's a strong enough desire for a certain area to have those standards.
Does that include like art installations or anything like that?
Uh, not in our development code, probably not. But in talking with some of the, the business owners and, and some of downtown leadership, there has been talk of developing maybe some sort of downtown organization that would be able to vet public art installations. So that's, that's talked about a little bit in here.
Cool.
Yeah, I think it'd be really neat if we could do more with public art, of course, but also signage. I really like the signs that are on, what street is that? You know, the ones that are large by the Damon Runyon House and those kinds of things. And in Corvallis, the downtown is obviously kind of like our downtown, old and bricks, that kind of thing. They have the, the history of the building on the building with some sort of metal photo, pictures of what it looked like in 1870. You know, it's kind of fun to see this building was originally, you know, I don't know, laundry or a stable or something like that. And now it's bank. But I, I think that we could really augment what we have and entice people to, to kind of check things out a little bit more and maybe even extend some of those wonderful signs on Levenworth? Is that Levenworth? Yeah. Into some of the older neighborhood groups too. We talked about doing it in City West, which is across from City Park, and we just kind of ran down, our enthusiasm wore out. But I, I'd like to see some of that, you know, to, to talk about that neighborhood on 14th Street that's had all the older houses and there was the President's House, that kind of thing, to have something in a, in a very tasteful signage kind of thing.
Okay, is that all the comments? So appreciate the, the briefing. I enjoy reading 250 pages. Well, well, well done. So on that note, we'll move on to the next item, which is the city manager's briefing.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Good job, Ben. Thanks for you and your team for the work you've done. Look forward to the follow-up on that. Thank you. On this last process, so. Couple, few things to go over. I know you all got a, I think you all got an invite from the new Manhattan Parks and Rec Foundation. They're having a reception down at the Depot on the 20th. It's on our meeting date, so I think they may have thought we started our meeting at seven. But it would be difficult for you to attend that. But I wanted you, I think they were mainly, wanted to make you aware of it and that they were proceeding to, to, to raise some funds. And really, their, their goal is to raise enough funds so they can be part of the Grow Green Match Day. And that's the, I think, the purpose of, of that event.
He mentioned that this morning at the, at the coffee that, said there were 30 people there. He said, if all of you donate $250, we'll have enough to make the match. So I'll put in that plug for them. If you're out there and you got some extra money, please donate to that because the commission pushed real hard to get this foundation put in place to help with Parks and Rec. It's one of the key things we pushed for last year.
They're 20.
Want to see it succeed.
They're 25% towards their goal of $10,000. One of the organizers of the event called me because I, she asked me to forward the announcement to the rest of the commission. And I told, I told her I would do so, but I also told her none of us would probably be there. And she called me and said, are they all opposed to what's going on? Are they, you know, no, bad timing.
They do, so FYI, their, their website is mhkparksandrecfoundation.org. So that's mhkparksandrecfoundation.org. Also, we submitted some testimony. They had, we had sent some testimony in last week on the partisan hearing and the election committees canceled that committee meeting. And then they rescheduled it and we were getting ready to submit it again and they canceled it again. So I don't know whether that, where that one's going to go for sure. But there is a bill that we, that I think you should have a copy in your hard folder tonight. Senate Bill 468. This is an unusual bill, as I would say, in that it is trying to tie a lot of the economic development tools we have to the revenue-neutral rate for budgets so that somehow if you give a tax abatement or TIF, you use property tax TIFs, you have to calculate that into your revenue-neutral rate somehow. It doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, the revenue-neutral rate's a transparency issue of, are we going to keep taxes flat or are we going to raise them above that calculated revenue-neutral rate? But it's, it would affect our TIF districts, our tax government financing, our industrial revenue bonds, all of those issues. And so we did speak out against it. I, I know that I visited with the chamber and the metal group of Manhattan, Topeka, Lawrence and Emporia. Also, we're going to submit, submit testimony. I think that hearing is tomorrow on that particular, it's in the Senate. I at, go ahead. Okay.
They're taking tomorrow off to go to the Chiefs parade.
Oh, very, very good.
They took, they took yesterday off because it was after the Chiefs game, so, I mean.
I, I asked Brian, Pete, Director of the Riley County Police Department, if he would come tonight as part of my briefing. And we, I know he's been working with his staff and other folks in the emergency preparedness component to look at some of our Fake Patty's Day issues we've had in the past. And we, we, we had a meeting yesterday on several issues and that was one that came up and he shared those with me. So I wanted you, I know I've gotten a couple of emails from some folks that were impacted last year by that event and were curious as to what we were doing about it. So you might be getting some of those too. So I said, Brian, why don't you come, let the commission know what, what we're, what you're planning on.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission and city manager, Brian Pete with the Riley County Police Department, good evening. We, we were planning on, on briefing formally our law board here in the next couple of days regarding what RCPD's plan is for Fake Patty's Day as it is. To give, again, some background, last year, we've been, you know, having a series of, uh, there were, there was a, an issue in the Rotone areas of young students, young people who have taken over the streets. And what the department is looking at doing is more of a focus on preventative measures and getting out a message of enforcement. So within, over the last several weeks, we've been meeting within the department to come up with operational plans is how this, and is how our enforcement efforts will go. We've been meeting with other law enforcement stakeholders, to include K-State and KHP. At this point, we are not planning to ask other law enforcement agencies from outside of our jurisdiction to come in to augment staffing for a myriad of reasons. But we think that at this point, based on where we're at, we will be adequately staffed for the event. All officers will be on. All officers will be on deck. And so again, as I mentioned, we're looking at preparation and prevention efforts. So our victim coordinator, our P I Os, other officers have been reaching out to student organizations. To just folks on the street. We've also gone to the problem houses of last year. Majority of those folks have graduated and moved on, but we are emphasizing that we are going to be doing very. Direct enforcement efforts. So the, the idea behind what we're doing is we're telling people. We're going to do what we've told people and we're gonna tell people we did what we told you we were going to do. So if we start to see congregation in certain areas, we will act on those. We will reach out to whoever's, whoever, whether it's the landlord or whether it's the person who has, who owns the place or who is renting the property. We will be looking at enforcement efforts from there. And again, this also includes reaching out to the folks who were directly impacted in those neighborhoods. So it's not just the houses that have had these parties. It's the community members and the citizens that had to deal with that disruption. So we're also doing that. And I wanna, you know, again, make it clear to anyone who is, who is out there listening to what the department's going to do on Fake Patty's Day. There is that separation of the R C P D as opposed to the city commission. So if you have issues and questions regarding that, my bosses are the law board. So members of the community, obviously, the city is, this is the city, this is the impact. But the law enforcement efforts, give me a call, give my law board a call. And then that way you can work directly with us rather than having to go through the third party of the city and whatever our enforcement efforts are. And we'd be happy to come out and meet with any cities, with any citizens, with any organizations to talk about what we're doing. So again, early enforcement, we've been working with K H P, county and city EMS and fire. And, and, you know, the encouragement is just, we're just getting that word out on safety. We've always seen increases in whether it's actual reports to law enforcement or whether they're informal reports to the crisis center. Of things like unfortunately, like sexual assaults, driving while intoxicated. People who are drinking way too much with those, those boards drinks that they have, that they mix with powerade and a whole bunch of alcohol. Thinking, I can get drunk, but I can also replenish my electrolytes and then. So that's causing, you know, a significant amount of strain on resources in the county and in the city. And we're just trying to get out there and push people to be responsible. And, and to be safe in these efforts. So with that being said, I stand ready for any questions that the commissioners may have of me.
Um, you know, I live by City Park, so I do see many people walking back and forth. Sometimes I would say straggling back and forth. But it's not been as bad in our area since they seem to have moved over to Thurston and Kearney and, and those streets. And really, but I do think it's important, a lot of, I talk to people and they say, well, I live on the west side of town. It's, I don't even, you know, I, I have no hint that's even going on. But I did talk to someone who two years ago had a stroke and that, on that day and was in the emergency room. And it was so crazy and busy, they sent her home. And that wasn't until Tuesday that they diagnosed what was wrong with her. So this does impact everybody in Manhattan, you know, because she really hadn't received the competent care that she should have. Because of the overcrowding at the E R during good old Fake Sam Patty's Day. Yeah. But you can make a fortune picking up the cans next day though.
That, and that is unfortunate.
Yeah.
But, but we will be out there. Once we see those congregations, we'll be moving on those. Hopefully that we don't get to a point where we're losing control. We want people to understand, you know, we're respecting your rights to, to have a good time within the limits of responsibility and accountability. So if you're gonna have a party, have a party at your own home, but be tentative to how many people that you invite over. Because again, like we had said, we had issues with fire trucks and ambulances getting in and out of those areas for cause of service. That weren't even related to Fake Patty's Day, if you will. And, but yeah, the school has been, K State has been a great partner with us as well as the, the city.
So the city noise ordinances, I think the cutoff's eleven o'clock. Is that helpful on that?
Yes.
Shutting down those parties because, you know, that information needs to get put out there. Because I know the past couple of years, those things went way past that. And I mean, that regulation's pretty clear and if we do the enforcement, that should put a big dent in it.
And that's, that's what that, that intent is. And after Fake Patty's Day, Ron and his team, Katie and Melissa have reached out specifically. What do you need from us to enforce accountability and safety within the community with Fake Patty's Day? So they've been extraordinarily helpful and proactive with us. So what we have on the books is helpful. We will have enough officers to enforce that.
Will you also be taking this message to the wet fraternity and sorority houses?
Yes, we have been, we had had meetings with Greek organizations. I believe they also have an attorney that normally advises those organizations regarding any, any tickets. Or violations that folks manage. So the word is out there that the Riley County Police Department will be stepping up significantly its enforcement efforts. And, you know, we don't want to be draconian about it, but at the same time, we cannot tolerate that type of behavior here in Manhattan.
I was just gonna add that, you know, relative to some of those tools, we've looked at utilizing the disorderly house provisions. That we have on the books and, and possibly tweaking those a little bit. But certainly some of these large host gatherings that cause disruption to their neighborhood. And some of the events that go on there could fall under that category as well. So it's some of that educational material that you really don't want to become one of these houses. And that's more of a message to the owner of the property that's, that's running it to tenants that may be causing the issue.
Is there gonna be an open consumption, just anything in Aggieville that day? Or has there been anything like that this year? Like, I know there's been talk about it, but did that come through?
Not to my knowledge. Actually, I don't think there is a organized event by Aggieville specifically. There has been, there wasn't really last year either. There are some. Businesses that are promoting some different things within their own walls. But there's no plan at this point to fence off the area. And even when we fenced the areas off, we really haven't allowed for that common consumption area. It's been confined.
Is that, is that something that, like, I don't, I, I know you haven't been here a whole lot of time. But is that something that you might see as, as a bit of somewhat controlled chaos, maybe? If we have, hey, this is where you go. And I'll, you know, have the, allow those businesses to, to do those types of events. Cause I know it started as an Aggieville thing, a way for, for those businesses to, to make some extra money before the summer. Is there, do you, do you see any type of ability to move it back into Aggieville? And, and have that focus so that it's, it's more localized in that area?
Yeah, there's, there's several different schools of thought on that, whether it's a containment issue or not. I think that from, from our standpoint. From a liability standpoint, with no organization, no clear organizer to try to, try to enforce safety and rules and accountability. It, it makes it extraordinarily difficult to pin that down. I, I, I think from, from our perspective, we just encourage folks that if you're, if, if this is what you're gonna do, I get it. You're young. I used to be young eighty years ago too. But if this is what you're going to do, if you want to have a good time, if you want to, want, want to be out there. There are places and venues that are specifically in business to do that. And they are responsible and they are held accountable to the things that they have to do. So we definitely would encourage people to, if you want to have a good time, we have an entertainment district, go to those places. We, we have very good, close relationships, partnerships with the business owners that are down in Aggieville. And, and go there, have a good time, as you would any Friday or Saturday night. But, but those issues, unfortunately, when these things tend to grow, the containment issue becomes a real problem. And as we've seen in the past, that folks just unfortunately aren't just behaving themselves in a way that's respectable to their neighbors or even to themselves.
Yeah, Peter, I can give you, you know, I, I've been looking at Fake Patty's Day since two thousand and eleven. Spent many nights walking with the former directors down there, spent like twelve hours. And when, when the Aggieville Business Association sponsored it, they did try to contain it. But the problem was it became like a Sturgis event. We had people from all over the place descending on Manhattan. And then the bars got so crowded that, you know, the fire department would go in and it would be over occupied. And then that forced everything out. And so what happened was we, we may have contributed to the, to the issue by doing very good enforcement in Aggieville. You know, we didn't have any major crimes or anything, but, but the problem is it spilled out into all the apartment complexes and kids were up on the roof. And, and so the, the business associations basically said they don't want to be associated with sponsoring it. And you have one or two bar owners that want to push this and, you know, to me, that's unfortunate. You know, over the years, we actually talked to them about how about you don't open the bars at eight o'clock? How about you don't open till one? And they refused to do that. And, and they did things like, like had breakfast at eight o'clock. And people would go down and have breakfast and get drunk and then sober up and get drunk again by noon. And it was, it just became like a cult thing, you know, for the kids. And so, you know, we've got to do something to redirect it. So I think, you know, this is a little bit different approach. I mean, we used to bring in, you know, surrounding police departments to help. We set up a command center in the ice rink and, and, you know, we had a drunk tank over there where the, where the little dance house is, the round house. That EMS set up and, you know, we did the best, the best we could and then COVID sort of killed it. You know, we didn't have it at all. And so that caused people to relook. And hopefully, you know, we can keep it toned down so that it's more like a normal Saturday night. As opposed to some kind of a special fest. And I think if we highlight enforcement, maybe it'll discourage people from coming here. It's, it's, it's like, we really don't want to have this Sturgis type out of control party here, you know, once a year. It's just not what we want.
I, yeah. When I've been there for many years too, and it's just amazing to me. Well, one thing that's amazing to me is that you see all these kids up at eight o'clock in the morning. They don't, the rest of the time, they don't, you know, but they're walking. But I think part of the thing is that they go back to their apartments or housing or fraternity. And the beer's cheaper there and then they drink a bunch of beer and then they have to go walk over to Aggieville. At least they're all walking, at least in my neighborhood. And, and so to see who's there, you know, kind of regroup. But, but he's right. They, they, they're drunk and then they sober up. Back, you know, it's back and forth and back and forth. And then the sitting on the roofs is just totally scary to me. And you just kind of, it brings out the mother in you. You just want to go get them off the roof. But I do think that it's not as bad as it was in, you know, about two thousand and five, two thousand and six. I mean, we had helicopters and things like that to help us. But it's just very frustrating when you see some little, particularly girls just so totally drunk. That they really have no ability to, you know, they'll wander out into Blumenthau. I mean, it's. Just want to say, and, and I once had a call from a mother in Saint Louis. Who said her sixteen-year-old daughter was coming to this and would she be safe? And I said, no. You know, I'm sorry, why are you letting your sixteen-year, you know? So I don't think we're getting as many people from out of town as we used to though.
Yeah, and I, and I hope that tapers off because we used to have quite a few from out of town.
And, and that's been some of the problem when you get a knucklehead from one place and they want to come here and act an, act an idiot. And, you know, that, that's something obviously we are very much going to not tolerate. And partly, even with the crime reduction plan, we let folks know, you know, we, we, we like people who are gonna come here. And, and have a good time and contribute to the community and be responsible, but we don't tolerate the nonsense. This is not the community to come in here and kind of show yourself off and, and, you know, in, in that, in that type of thing. So we, we definitely are gonna make sure that that word stays out there. And we do have a series of, there, there are ways that we can kind of predict how many people may be coming from in and out of town. Again, with stakeholders and businesses and, and other folks that would give us a good indication of, of how many folks we're looking at and, and what we're up against. But my thanks to, to the city because they've been extraordinarily helpful in us being proactive in these efforts.
I just, I know it's completely different demographic, but there have been very successful common consumption events downtown. Manhattan Brewing Company's done a lot of those. The, the Oktoberfest that they had down in Points has been very successful. And, you know, I, I wonder if there's maybe some kind of middle that we could find between having every, you know. The strict enforcement inside, you know, if we were able to make it a common consumption thing, shut down Moro Street for the day. You know, people that could kind of relieve a little bit of pressure from the buildings, people could be outside. Just, you know, some things that I think, you know, could be a good idea to look at for next year. I know it's kind of late this year.
No, totally understand. And one, one of the things that have helped us, that we've looked at with that is respectfully the demographic. The folks who have been coming down there in the old town areas, they're, they're, these are folks who are a little bit more older, mature, family oriented. And, and these are folks who are able to, to, that party and it's behind them. They've been able to take care of themselves and conduct themselves in more responsible ways as opposed to. And that's been more of the community feel. And I think that's a good thing because it shows the character and the culture of Manhattan. But then when we have folks who are coming from out of town, that's the, the, the element. I think our students are being responsible. I think K State, they have very good stringent accountability methods and efforts within the university. They're bringing in good people who are gonna contribute and grow up to be responsible citizens. But I think that the trouble for us is the draw of what that brings from that outside element to come in.
Yeah. See, Peter, I agree, you know, that Aggieville Business Association can, can host those events. And they, they've done that in the past and, you know, they'll have the St Patty's Day parade this year again and things like that. But, but, but I think for sure, you know, my, my personal feeling is that the Aggieville Business Association should never support Fake Patty's Day. Because it has this connotation. You know, and we, we just need to suppress that. But if they want to support, you know, any other day, I, I don't have a problem with it. But, but that's one that I think just the history of it tells you, you just want to walk away from that thing. It's not, not manageable.
I know, you know, one of the most popular restaurants in Aggieville, they don't even open the whole day. It's just not even worth it for them to be open on, on Fake Patty's.
Yeah, I think the sad thing is that Fake Patty, you know, people go downtown to Oktoberfest and things like that. Their purpose is not to get totally drunk. And that sort of seems to be the purpose of people that go to, you know, I mean. Who gets drunk at seven o'clock in the morning? I mean, that's just.
But that's a different.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a whole different thing. And, and you just feel, I mean, I've had, I've had kids crawl over my back fence, through my compost pile. I mean, you know, it's just, they're just so totally, you know, blotto that you just really worry about them.
And yes, and then just, you had mentioned the, like, the, the holding area when folks are. I think one of the other reasons we may not be able to use the pavilions because that would be a difficult situation with the, with the ice rink still there, that being in here.
I think it will be down by then. But one of the reasons I asked Brian to come early is because the Fake Patty's Day is on March second.
Yeah, but, but what I just said was just a terrible attempt at a joke.
Yeah, 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 there you go.
But, but, you know, if, if there's a lot of problems, you may want to have to consider that. That was the plan we used for, for many years was to, you know, use that little round house and the ice rink. You know, especially like as Karen said, when we, we had folks driving around in those little gators. And we, we picked up students that were completely unable to, you know, function. And we just put them there for a while and the EMS guys put IVs in them. And then when they were able to get up and walk, we took them home. And, and so it was a, you know, a safety thing. They didn't get arrested. They got taken care of. And so that, that's something that I thought was well done by, by R C P D over the years.
Director Pete, I'd just like to say thank you because I think with your coming in with a fresh set of eyes on this activity. It, it sounds promising and I hope things go very, very well.
So do I.
Thanks for addressing it.
Thank you, because if they don't go well, I know there's, there are two commissions I'll be standing in front of.
I think one thing that's helped us is sadly, many other universities have this happening on their campuses. So it's not quite, I mean, when this started in Manhattan, it was kind of the only place in the Midwest. And we had people from way far away. And now they can just go locally.
Yeah, it's not unique to Manhattan. And some cities tried, you know, shutting down the, the bar district for that day. And the students just moved it to another day. Cause we talked about that one year. It's just not doable. So, so good luck. Wish you luck on that and appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate you joining us this evening and giving us that update. Sometimes twenty-eight degrees and a cold rain.
Yeah.
Sometimes twenty-eight degrees and a cold rain helps diffuse some of those things as well.
Snowstorm would be nice, too.
I think that same day, they're doing the test of the tornado alarm system, so we might, you know.
All right. Some other items to cover, wanted to visit a little bit about the joint city, county, county meeting Thursday. So what we tried to do is put together a packet, hopefully give folks a chance to review that instead of taking up a lot of time with a presentation. But we'll have copies of that PowerPoint and if there are some slides that folks have questions about. But we'd really like to just kind of have you all kind of engage your counterparts about what the issues are. And whether or not, what we don't want is us to spend months developing an RHID policy if they're not going to support it or even be open to it. I mean, that, and then, you know, okay, that's something that we can focus on some other things. But to me, that would be very helpful. And if there's some slides, we'll certainly have the papers and we can bring stuff up and go over. If there's questions about some of those examples of how the resident will benefit of the new home as well as it does help the developer some too. So just the different programs, I think.
Yeah, I think an example is good because then we can just put to them, well, if we did something like this example, what would be your reaction to it? Would you support it? And if the answer is no, well, how would you, is it just no just because of concept? Or if we change the percentages or what's wrong?
Does that sound like a good game plan?
Yeah, I think, you know, if they are going to be, I think they're somewhat skeptical from what I watched at their meeting a couple of days ago. We really should bring it to them as a, you know, ask them for some alternatives or some other ideas because, you know, what is a Manhattan problem is also a Riley County problem. And we really do need to work together to make that happen, so.
Yeah, for me, there's, you know, two questions. Form one, do you support affordable housing? Yes or no? You know, and of course, if you get a no on this, it sort of says, hey, you don't support affordable housing. But I understand their issue, which is they're looking at the immediate budget thing, which is my deal. And they're afraid it's going to cost them some money. And as I think that through though, you know, if you look at this downtown tomorrow plan and what the chamber's talking about economic development, we have to get more people to live in the city limits and in the county. Affordable housing will do that. If they spend their paycheck, then we'll collect the sales tax. And to me, I think that law offset any property tax laws, but that's just, you know, my guesstimate, I guess, of the way I look at it. And I think they got to consider that. But that's going to be, you know, as Ron says, if they just absolutely dig in their heels and don't want to do it, then we're going to have to relook how we want to approach affordable housing.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is the alternative, which is if we do nothing and these, you know, this housing does not get developed, their property tax income stays the same. And if we do the RHIDs, their property tax stays the same for a short amount of time and then increases a lot once we get it paid off. So that to me is.
Yeah, we could use the example of, you know, Civics Plus. We did that like over ten years ago and I think they back on the property rules now. And the way we structured that was they ended up paying the property tax for what back in those days was eighties plants. And they built above it and all the new was, you know, exempt from property, but they stayed flat. And so now we've got a little bit of a jump. And I think that's been effective. I mean, as long as we're not going backwards and we wouldn't be in this case.
All right, thank you. I know, Good Morning Manhattan this Thursday, a couple of days. Wynne is the, one of the speakers at that event and Susan is planning to attend. So if a third one decides to go, let us know because we need to notice it. The governor's in town for the Landon lecture and so you probably all got an invite to that. It's a public event as well. The sculpture unveiling at Douglas Center is the twentieth. So twentieth's a busy day at 10:00 AM. So I think at least right now, I've got Wynne and Susan and Karen that are planning to attend. The mayor's speaking a note, so we're, I did tell the radio station that you and I would need to be leaving and they may want to double book that for just us there a half hour and bring somebody else back in. I don't know where Brandon is on that.
That's true.
Anyway, and then we've got on February 29th, and I think I put this in your mail folder here a few days ago, we got an invite from Nathan Eberlein, who's the new executive director of the Kansas League of Municipalities. They are holding an event in Lawrence at the KU Union. It's co-sponsored by the League of Kansas Municipalities, the KU School of Public Affairs and Administration and the City of Lawrence. The National League of Cities started in Lawrence over a hundred years ago. So they wanted to make sure you were all invited to that if you wanted to. Again, that's February 29th, it's from six to eight PM in that evening. They are also, speaking of the league, planning to, I think you probably all got an invite. They're having their City Leaders Academy at the Hilton Garden Inn on April 12th, starting at Friday at 2:00 PM. So that would be something you might want to consider. And then we have the Legislative Coffee coming up that is at Sunset Zoo on February 24th by the Chamber at 7:30 in the morning. And then ERGov is February 26th. We have an MRC luncheon on March 6th. And I think the only other thing I wanted to talk about, I guess I was supposed to go over the planning chart, I want to. Not a lot has changed there. So coming up next week on the twentieth, on the general agenda, we've got the Aggieville Public Infrastructure Contract Amendments. That primary contracts with Olson Associates and several subcontracts relative to the design of the infrastructure. This would be on 12th Street, which is the design of 12th Street between Moro and Laramie. And then Laramie between 11th and Manhattan. So two blocks in that aspect of things. So more to come on that particular item. And then discussion on a preservation plan grant opportunity. So State Historic Preservation Office contacted us last year actually and said they had some hundred percent money to do some study. And it's, the amounts are about double what they would previously give us for a max. And so we're looking at doing that preservation plan development and wanted to visit with you about that and get some feedback. I think it's a significant opportunity. We are on the consent agenda then. We've got the resolution back for the allowing for public comment at all the legislative meetings for the rest of the year. We have a request by the Aggieville Showdown Group for their special event with alcohol. If you haven't been to that, it's pretty interesting. Very controlled atmosphere with livestock, very, very unique livestock that they're auctioning off and transitioning. So the permit to do that with alcohol is why that's on your agenda for them. And I think this is the third, fourth year?
Yeah, third year.
Something like that?
Yes, and this worked out real well. It's like you were talking about, Peter, this is like not a Fake Patty's Day. This is a controlled fun event.
And there's a lot of vendors as well.
Yeah.
We've got an amendment to engineering agreement on the North Channel improvements. We've got a restrictive covenant on some real estate that we bought out on the BioSalads Farm. One of the, one of the tracts we had has some old buried tanks. So we have to do this covenant on that site in order to access some state funds to dig up those tanks and do away with them. So it's a formality if we want to access the grant funds, which we've done in the past. And we just did it on the shops where we provided the gas tanks and remediated that. Riley County's asking for waiver of fees for building permits. So I don't know if you want to use that for leverage Thursday or not. We've done that twice now. We did the EMS facility also.
Yeah.
The, we have a couple FEMA grant components. We have a FEMA grant applications to apply for buyouts and acquisition for flood prone properties. This one's on Village Drive. It's, I think, the fifth. We've done four previous ones there that have been, it's been inundated previously. I did want to mention, you know, Strawberry Circle is unique. It's in the north, northeast part of the community, kind of behind Cayman. And it was not, it was actually built after the ninety-three FUD. But in, I want to say 2013, I think, or 2011, FEMA changed the flood maps. And it is now actually in the floodway. So they've got some challenges. They also back up to a tributary that is collapsing. And so they're threatened by that as well. But the big issue here is that it's, it's actually now in a floodway. And so it's eligible. I don't know whether it'll get there from the state's review perspective, but I do think it's a new enough house and it could be relocated as opposed to demolished from that standpoint. So the other FEMA component is a BRIC grant application. And this is somewhat unique. We had put in for some BRIC application funding, kind of a pre preliminary application. And we got feedback from the state and the feds that, you know, your application is eligible. If you do some things, it'll be stronger. And oh, by the way, we have this new grant program that will help you make it stronger. And so that's what this is. It's a, it's a planning grant that really looks at our downtown or this area and the area east of campus that all flows to the creek and the river and some of the major infrastructure that needs to be designed. And hopefully will help position us better to be successful in a grant that gives us the brick and mortar money, if you will, the actual infrastructure construction money.
Ron, what does that acronym stand for?
Uh, that's a good question. I'll have to get back to you on that. I think it's a.
Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities.
There you go.
It's B-R-I-C.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks, Jared. Got some change order on a water booster upgrades that we've been doing. And then some bylaws and amendments to some of our advisory boards. We also are planning an executive session next week for non-elected personnel. That's related to the city manager search and specifically to the position of interim. And then we should plan to give you a memo this week relative to that.
Ron, when would we have an opportunity to discuss the composition of the search committee?
Well, I was hoping we could do that tonight. Part of this, I mean, it's, it's an open meeting, so.
Yeah, if you want to give us some direction on that, that would be fine.
That was on my list and I talked to Lynn about it and she said, you know, that's the next step. She'd like to nail that now.
Okay, good. Moving on then through the March 5th meeting, anticipate discussion on the Lee Mill Village Development. And that's the group we've contracted with to develop the remaining lots there. And then we have a draft housing policy in front of you. Obviously, some of the discussion that happens Thursday may influence that a little bit. But one way or the other, we'll have some, some elements there to, based on our discussion at your retreat to have in front of you. We will have some resolutions for some of those special events that were just mentioned by Manhattan Brewing. Those are both theirs. They're kind of, they're getting creative in their festivity marketing, obviously. And then I think the rest of the selection committee recommendations for some of the on-call services will be there. And then several final plats all in that one Willis edition. And then awarding, hopefully, concrete street maintenance, our first round of that. This is all up in the Four Winds area and some more bylaws. Back in the back, we've got some work sessions. So the next work session will be update on the East Manhattan Gateway Plan. And then on the 12th, Brian will be back for his regular quarterly update. And then the wastewater treatment plant project update that had been previously scheduled is ready to go. And then there's a grant application opportunity they'll talk about in that particular project as well. And then on the 26th, the traffic master plan and the Seaco Park improvements update. And then on April 9th, the, our street maintenance update as well as our stormwater and floodplain management update. So lots of, lots of infrastructure coming forth here in the next couple of months. And then in the latter part of April, we'll have an update on NHK and the Park and Rick Master Plan. So and then the budgeting stuff will start after that. And I think that's all I have, man.
Okay, thanks, Ron. I guess, you know, we'll take up the topic there of the committee. I don't know, did everybody get to talk to Lynn this week? Okay, and, you know, my input to her was, as I looked at, I like the idea of a search committee with only two commissioners on it simply because it solves all these, you know, issues of open meetings and things like that. And I think it'll be more efficient. But I also think that whoever's on that committee then, you know, every couple of weeks will have a work session. And during this coordination meeting, we can share, you know, anything that can be shared in open session. I know some things will have to be in executive session, like specific names and things like that. But I think, I think that's doable. So I think the question is, now, it doesn't have to just be two commissioners, you know, HR, of course, will be on it.
Yeah, well, just let me interject. When I talked to her, she did tell me that with our side of the commission, that she could literally have the whole commission on it. So there really wouldn't be a need to exclude anybody from that search group if they wanted to be on it. So, I mean, saying that there is, no, I understand what you're saying, just saying there's another view.
Yeah, it makes it cumbersome. That's where I came down on it. But otherwise, you know, we can put all five on there and that's doable too. It's just going to be a little bit more of a logistics nightmare for her.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if all five want to be on it. I'm just saying, the discussion I had with her, there's no reason to exclude anybody who want to be on it.
Right, right. She wasn't directing it one way or the other. That's just where I came down after the discussion because I, you know, I get logistics and if you can do it the easier way, that's a better way to do it.
Yeah, my thought was to have, you know, just the two commissioners so that we could avoid having to schedule the open meetings all the time. You know, I think if there are three that really, really want to be on it, I guess we can consider that. But that's what I would recommend.
I'm kind of concerned about if we start, so who's going to be on the search committee besides the commission? You know, do we want the chamber? Do we want the medical group? Do we want the, it seems to me, having done this a few times, the commission makes sense to me. So that you don't have, no matter who you put on it, if you have a search committee of outside people, there are going to be criticisms that you didn't include this group.
Correct.
And, you know, do the older neighborhoods, the low income, the, you know, the developers, the... And I know it's cumbersome to have the five of us and have to, you know, kind of watch what we do in open meetings and that kind of thing. But I think it'd be a slightly more open thing if we all five just said, we're going to do this and we're going to find the best person.
One, one thing, too, when I talked to her, she made it sound like the search committee would just be commissioners, her, her assistant and some staff, that there's this larger, and I'm trying to think what it was called, the community group or something that was eighteen to twenty.
Stakeholder group.
Yeah.
Okay.
So she wanted us to make a list of that. That's a future step.
Okay.
Like you say, we'd, we'd want to, you know, be all encompassing, you know, RCPD, the chamber, everybody. And they can all put their input, but they won't be formal members of the search committee.
Okay.
I, I, I think one caution about the, having all of us on there and having everything in an open meeting, it might make it a little bit more difficult to be very honest sometimes. If you know that you are in an open meeting, it might, it might not bring a lot of, yeah, we might not be able to be quite as open and honest as we would in an executive session. And now we, we could just say, have an open meeting and say, we're going to go into executive session. I don't know what the rules are of that. But again, it would, it would be, it's just extra steps that we'd have to take.
Yeah, and we could use executive session for this, too.
Yeah.
And, and I would hate for us to get to the point where the two people recommend someone and then one commissioner is dead set against it. You know, I mean, it seems to me you have everybody, all five, involved from, from the get-go, and you have input from everybody so that all five commissioners feel that their input is valued and understand what's going on. And they have a much deeper sense of the people we're interviewing than having two come back and say, well, we talked to so and so and so. I mean, that's just what I feel.
Well, we'll do the interview.
Excuse me.
Karen, no, away this.
Can I have an opportunity to say something?
Go ahead. Go for it.
Okay. When I spoke with Lynn this afternoon, she actually said to me that the commission, the search committee could include commissioners, staff, community partners, citizens. She did suggest not having many more, any more than six or seven on the committee. I would, my preference would be to open it up to some people in the community. And my first thought is, given the importance of the Chamber of Commerce to our, the economic development portfolio in Manhattan and the role that they play as a partner to the city, I think my thought is that they should be included. I would like to see one of the younger entrepreneurs, possibly. You know, Karen, you were talking earlier about what's our future vision for Manhattan. I think we need somebody who's outside the box, who, who, I'm hoping that the candidates that we see are outside the box. But the search committee is going to be making a recommendation of five to six people. It's not, it's not as if we're going to come, whoever is on it is going to come to the commission and say, here's your person, you know, or here's two people. There, there are going to be choices to be made by all of us. And I would, I think it's an important time in Manhattan to include other members of the community on the search committee. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that was just different than the conversation I had with her. Obviously, it's our discretion. It's who we want to have on it. But I think to Karen's point, it gets difficult when you start selecting certain people out of town to be there and not certain other. And while I can definitely hear you saying to have a younger entrepreneur, there's a lot of other people you're going to have to keep out in order to make that spot. You know, they have big investments and, you know, big standing in the community.
I think there's a way to do it where we're transparent and we express to the community that we want it. And yes, there will be stakeholder meetings. There will be opportunities for members of the community to engage with the candidates. But I, I still think that at that initial process where we're winnowing down, I asked her how many candidates she would anticipate, how many applications she would anticipate seeing. She said twenty-eight to thirty-two. So part of her job is going to be to winnowing that down. But she may still bring up to twelve to eighteen candidates for us to consider as a first cut. And I would, you know, I've not hired a city manager before. I would like to have some of the expertise of other people in our community to, to take part in that.
You see, and I envisioned that as like, if it got down to eighteen, we'd have executive session, and the two commissioners that were on it would discuss all that so that, you know, nobody's cut out of the process. And, and, and I also, as I understand the process, that there's enough community engagement as part of that to where that's going to be handled without running into the problem that Karen pointed out, which is, which is, I know that, that, that'll be an issue. If you pick, you know, two people from here, there'll be two that will feel like they should be part of it. But if there's a stakeholder system and the process she outlined, we can have the whole group there. So, so to me, it's important that this coordination meeting we're doing here is where the interface is so that, you know, whichever two of you are on that committee can, can, can then, you know, relay back the pertinent information to the rest of us.
Yeah, I would really not want to try and pick a couple people from the, you know, to represent a couple different groups, not, you know, then should we include the university or, and, and I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I'm thinking maybe two of us. The thing, too, is that most of these people who, when they apply, they don't want this to be public that they're applying, because they hopefully have a job at a good place and they're doing a good job. And so I think if you get a large committee looking at prospects, it gets harder and harder to keep everything, you know, under wraps, so to speak. And by the time the two commissioners have picked five, at that point, they do have to come clean and say, we're, you know, we're, we're going to be interviewed for this sort of thing. But I really, I can think of so many stakeholders who are going to be upset if you say, you're just going to have somebody from the chamber and, and a young entrepreneur. I, that's just, you know, that's just not, wouldn't work.
And, and I think, you know, I, I also thought, well, maybe it would be okay to have somebody from the city staff on there that won't be applying for the job.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I don't know who would, who would be best for that. I mean, I guess, Ron, you could make some recommendations.
Yeah, I, I think we could do that. I mean, Tammy is the HR person. I'd certainly do that. We've got a couple of folks over here that have played roles to, it, it's helpful for the candidates to get the tour of the city from the same person. And so there's that kind of liaison for that. And then engaging with the different staff opportunities to engage the candidates, the finalists, that just like stakeholders do and, and different things. You know, one of the things that have, some folks have done in the past that I've seen is have some of that early stakeholder group meetings to help really guide, what are, what are the, what are the traits we're looking at? What are the, what are the qualifications? What are the, what are the experience of the person, the type with that profile that is the advertisement that goes out for those candidates is something that can be a, a community thing. We've got some.
Yeah, I think we should, I definitely think we should have.
And that could be the more focus of the broader engagement to the community for feedback to you all as to, you know, here's, here's the type of candidate we think you should hire.
Yeah, my understanding is that's part of what she's going to do. It's part of the process. And, and so I, I think they'll have plenty of opportunity. And there'll be a lot of diverse opinions put forth on it, for sure, so.
Ultimately, it's our decision, right?
So, you know, if we boil this thing down to a four-person committee.
The buck stops here.
I, I'm still against excluding any commissioner that wants to be on the selection committee.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So I guess we need to figure out who wants to be on this thing.
I want to be on.
Okay.
I'll, I'll probably step myself out just because I think it'll be, I'll, my schedule will probably get in the way the most. So I want it to be as flexible as possible so that we can be as efficient as possible with this. So, you know, I, I'd probably be the first one to step back and say, you know, I don't have to be on it, so.
Well, I hired Ron, and I don't think I can top that, so. I'll step back.
Okay. Susan?
I'd like to participate.
Okay. Well, you know, I would like to participate, but, you know, that would put three of us on there, so I'll just step back because my priority is make this simple. So, you know, if we just put John and Susan on there, that's fine with me.
Sounds good to me.
And, and, you know, the, and you'll be here maybe the longest. You've got a four-year term. The rest of us may be gone. And, and, and so I, I think that's a, that's a good mix. So if you're all agreeable to that, will that work for you, John?
That'll work.
Okay. And then, and then if we can get a city manager to appoint someone from the city staff to handle that, and we already got HR, that'll give us four. And I think that's quite doable.
And I think, too, should those two have issues or questions, we can have an executive session and hear, you know, where they're coming from. And if they, they want more input from the other three commissioners or that kind of thing, there's, there's nothing that precludes us from having a more thorough discussion at any level.
Yeah. But I think, you know, then what my expectation would be, if Susan and John get to give us an update every coordination meeting on how things are going, and that way, we'll be good with that, so.
Yeah. Well, you might get a candidate that has, that can't join us for six months or something, you know, there's an issue. And so you want to come back to us with that and say, we think this is the person, but, you know, they're having.
And, and of course, the ultimate goal is, you know, whoever we hire, and Lynn mentioned this, too, we really want to have a unanimous vote. That's what the goal is.
Oh, yeah.
Because I don't know if anybody would want to take the job if one of the commissioners didn't want them to have it. That'd be a little bit tough, so. Okay, so I think we resolved that.
Yeah, I, I think that's very helpful. Appreciate that.
Okay. And then I wanted to just mention, did all of you get to meet with Zach Burton?
Yes.
You know, and tour his housing development?
I thought we weren't supposed to do that.
I mean, you can.
You can.
Okay.
We're allowed to meet with him. He couldn't have three commissioners there.
Yeah.
But he, he, he had a proposal there. That's why I was curious if any of you thought much of that. He wanted, like, when we're doing this housing policy, he essentially thought we should take part of that economic development money for housing and essentially give a cash grant to developers. So it wouldn't involve, you know, this RHID or anything else. Just give me money. And what he proposed was a, a certain amount, and, and I don't remember. I'd have to look at this piece of paper. But what he was trying to do was take the cost of twenty-one units he was building and move the cost of that down into the workforce.
He wanted fifteen thousand dollars per unit.
That's what it was.
Right.
So you remember the numbers very good.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure. It's somewhere around three hundred thousand, I guess, if you have twenty-one units. And then on the surface, it looked okay, but I was just curious, you know, because we're going to talk about this policy. Is that something that we should consider putting in there?
I'm not opposed to the idea of it. I have some thoughts on the specific project, but that type of idea I don't think would be, I mean, it's essentially this, us subsidizing the construction and sale of that housing, which is completely within our, our purview to do. That's, it's our money. Or it's, it's the city's money, and it's our decision what to do with it.
It does set a precedent.
It does.
Yeah. Well, my thought was if we put in the policy, you could apply for a grant from that money, then they could do a presentation and commission votes on it. And then it's going to be, you know, case by case, like everything else.
He also, if I remember correctly, suggested that it be considered as a rebate and not, he would not be requesting that money upfront, but it would be contingent on the financing of the project.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and that was important. And that's, that would be the details in the policy. You could apply for the money, but you don't get it until the building's done.
Yeah.
And it's on the market. And so I, I, I don't know if, if that's been part of the thought process on this policy or not. But that's why I wanted to bring it up, because that's the feedback we're getting from some of the builders.
Yeah, and that's kind of as we, I, I think our plan was to bring some structure and recommendations to you and then fill in with aspects like this. And, and is it, is it targeted for certain ranges of types of housing and income levels, or is it broader? So those are the things. And, and how is it we're going to use our funds, our eight hundred thousand a year?
Yeah. And it's a limited amount, and so I, you know, I'd, I'd be hesitant to just want to spend it all.
It could be one way, but.
Yeah, I would just try to find some angle where we can make some progress while we're working months to get all this stuff set up. So if there's some way we could entertain some quick win projects that, you know, aren't over the top expensive, and we can, till we're moving on something, I think that would be good.
I, I do think, though, we'd, we, we want to hear from legal on this. And it would seem arbitrary to me if we granted to him this and then somebody else came in and we said, oh, no, we're, we don't like what you're doing. And I just, I just think it's a little precedent setting.
Right. We, we, again, need to develop some type of written policy.
You're correct, Karen. To me, it'd be like, like, like an economic development request, close to it. Like, like you say, okay, this is my request. It fits into this box, and we can approve it or disapprove it based on the merits.
I think we'd have to look at it and say, you know, if, say, a bunch of other people came with something that matched up pretty close, would we really consider that a problem?
Okay.
I was curious, I was curious, Ron, when you, on the inter-organization memo, you included a, a description of another project, Cypress Ridge, which I think is being developed by, I always get confused, Manhattan, one of the other houses.
The partnership?
Yeah. That wasn't talked about at our, at our last meeting. That, I think, did Jill, she made a small presentation, but did she go into detail about that one in particular? Have they requested funding?
They've, they've requested IRB support for, in that application process for tax credits. There's four of them.
Yeah. It isn't, it.
It's the low income.
It's a pre-application process.
Yeah.
Um, about how much do we have in that fund right now?
Y'all know, over there, six hundred?
About six hundred thousand.
I think it's around six hundred.
Okay.
The, the housing?
Housing portion.
I mean, that six hundred was based off of our estimates back in twenty twenty-one, so I'd say we're a year through. So it's probably a little, well, over six hundred thousand, probably closer to seven.
Okay.
That makes sense.
We'll break those.
Speaking of housing, that was in your packet. That came from K-State, and I just thought you might find that interesting.
Okay. Well, all right. And then I, I just have two other quick things. Just one, just, just for your information. I've been talking with Holiday Inn. They had a little bit of a spat with our parking department because they've been having pickup trucks, not pickup trucks, tractor trailers do deliveries at their back dock, and it blocks the street. And the enforcement folks wrote them a ticket because it is a safety hazard. And the city engineer took a look at it and agreed. And so he's all irritated, saying, I've been doing this for fifty years, you know, why have you guys now changed the rules? Why are you harassing me? So I tried to work out a solution, and Brian went down there and looked at it and came up with an idea of putting a, a pad. They'd have to take the sidewalk out and put a parking pad there so that the truck can get out of the way. And it would require pouring a concrete pad, and they got to take a tree out. And of course, that's the answer. But since it's on their property, they have to pay for it. So I gave you a heads up because, you know, in case you get a email or something, I mean, I, I've asked Ron to look at this, but the city, you know, doesn't have any funds for building his loading zone. That, that, that's going to have to be his thing. And then, and then the tree, maybe forestry can help him with that, but that's for Ron to figure out, because the tree probably is in city right of way. But it's not dying, so normally we just look at that when it's there. But just in case you, you get an email or something, that's the background. And, and the city engineer knows all about it and drew the diagram. And I think Ron's going to follow up with him, and hopefully it'll, it'll eventually get resolved. But, but that's been a little bit of a problem for, for Adrian and the parking people. Then the last thing, just out of curiosity, did anybody read the Mercury article on our discussion on parking?
Applying the AIG and stuff to.
That, that, it was completely off the rails, like they quoted your comment about, don't kick the hornet's nest. And they, they, they associated that with the Hilton and said, we weren't going to charge for parking at the Hilton. So, so the article, if you gave any feedback on that, is, they just totally went off the rails on that. There's nothing accurate in that article whatsoever, because that's not what we, you know, that's not what we agreed to. We, we passed that one ordinance, and we got the license plate reader, and we said, we'll, we'll figure out the fees, you know, next time around. And then that article just misled a whole lot of folks, I think, so.
Yeah, we do plan on bringing back the draft fee resolution in March for yours, for your consideration.
But I just thought I'd pass that on in case you get any emails or feedback on that. I, I...
Is, is there any opportunity for the city to send a correction or should one of us write a letter to the editor?
I, I send Ned little notes and he gets upset because, you know, he thinks we're beating up on his reporters. But, but when an article is totally inaccurate like that, I, I just think it needs to be pointed out.
So, did you do that on?
Yes.
Could I just add something? We're talking about trucks and things. The detour to not go on 14th Street takes people up one block to 15th Street, which is really, really awful. And so it might be better if the sign took them up to 16th Street. I saw a couple trucks coming, you know, food, I mean, food supply trucks coming down 15th Street is, it's drive at your own. I mean, it's, it's not just potholes. It's the bricks and, and it's really...
It's very unhappy.
It's a very unhappy street. And so, you know, maybe push them one more block with that detour and they, I think the drivers would be much pleased. And it takes you straight through, too, which 15th doesn't. You have to go to Laramie and, you know, turn. So that might, that might improve people's...
Okay. All right. I used up a lot of the time. Anybody else have anything that you need to share with the commission?
I would just report that I responded to, to the young man who sent us an email requesting that we start a Mediterranean restaurant.
Go for it.
I indicated that he might talk to Hannah Pease at Parkside Station and see what her plans are. And I pointed out that there have been rumors kicking around for about a year or two about one starting and that that's what, that the new place going into Cocobolos will have a Mediterranean flair, so.
This is good. I sent him back a response, too, referred him to the chambers, said, why don't you check out this entrepreneurial thing where they could give you money. And, and they may have some ideas. But I, but I said that the commission's not going to get involved in a restaurant.
No.
So that's good. That's good.
And I would just say thank you for the very prompt responses on the several that have come in about parking recently.
Yeah. Okay. If there's no other commissioner comments...
I'll just add that relative to the handout you got after the meeting a week ago, we'll have, we are, response is going out tomorrow. So we'll get a copy of that, too.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. So at that point, I, I move to adjourn the February 13th, 2024 city commission work session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
I'll vote yes this time.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Jack?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.